Good evening, everybody. Let us start the meeting of the Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency, this special study session this Monday, September 23rd, 2019. On the agenda today is the developer interviews for 12.5 acre site located at Carter Martin Housing Successor Parcel at Carter and Martin Streets. So we're going to have an introduction commentary from staff, and then I'll have some comments regarding how we're going to have this meeting. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Agency Board. Several weeks ago, the Agency discussed various development options for a site owned by the Agency and located at the intersection of Carter and Martin in the Bay Shore neighborhood. At that time, the Agency reviewed various affordable housing development concepts and agreed that master planning the site, preferably in cooperation with adjacent landowners, would result in optimal land use planning and address critical community concerns like traffic circulation, emergency vehicle access, as well as provision of community-serving uses. In addition, the Agency Board determined that selection of an affordable housing developer to master plan and develop the site could be best accomplished through a request of the qualifications process. Specifically, the Agency suggested that inviting qualification statements from a targeted list of developers with experience and demonstrated interest in the site would be most efficient and result in a faster development timeframe. On July 29th, the City released an RFQ to seven developers. As of the submittal deadline on August 30th, we received three responses from the following teams: Bridge Housing, whose team includes DECA Development, Cydel Architects, and BKF Engineers; the Core Companies; and a collaboration between Mercy Housing and Cy West Development, whose team includes Van Meter Williams Architects and BKF Engineers. Tonight, these three teams have been invited to participate in interviews, giving the Board the opportunity to learn more about their experience and qualifications. Based on discussions with the Affordable Housing Committee, with whom staff met on September 10th, we are suggesting that each team be invited to give a 10-minute presentation, followed by a question-and-answer session using six standard questions. The questions have been provided to the developers in advance of tonight's meeting, and they are included with your packet. And with that, I'll turn the meeting over to the Agency Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the way it's going to work is each developer will be invited to give the 10-minute presentation about their team and approach to development of the subject property. Following each developer's presentation, the Agency Board will ask the six standard questions for each developer for 15 minutes. I'm going to have, I'm going to start with the first question, then we're going to go left on downward to Mr. Giovanni, and I'll end up asking the sixth and final question. We're going to ask the developers to present and interviews in alphabetical order, starting with Bridge Housing, and then Core Companies, and then Mercy Cy West. And following those, we're going to have closing comments by the Agency Board, and then comments about the next steps in the development selection process. We will decide this issue at our September 30th meeting. Okay, so first up, we're going to start with Bridge Housing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Technology's working. Thank you, staff, members of the council. Good evening. We are excited to be here. We've been tracking the availability of this site for quite some time, like all of you. My name is Brad Wiblin. I'm a executive vice president at Bridge Housing. I have some of our team here tonight, including our partner. And we're going to go through a little bit of our qualifications and talk a little bit about our vision for the site, and we're going to try to answer most of your questions in some form or fashion, but in 10 minutes, there'll be plenty of time during the question-and-answer period to get to the rest of those. briefly Bridge is a 35-year-old nonprofit developer, owner, and property manager. We've been active, as you'll see, in the kind of master planning of these complicated sites for years. We've been active here in San Mateo County, and we're going to walk through some of what we've done. You'll see a little bit of our approach. In many of these cases, we have a partner. In many cases, a market rate partner is incredibly helpful to help share risk and some of the reward and stretch our capacity. So with that, I'll let my partner, Daniel, describe a little bit about his company.
As you know, DECA has a strong interest in the Greater Cow Palace area redevelopment. We're partnering with Bridge to participate in the market rate component of the Carter Martin project site, for which we provide capital and development support. We're also submitting, as a group, with Bridge and with Cattellus Development Company, a response to the Cow Palace Board's RFP for the development of the 67-acre parcel that they control adjacent to this site. And while the Cattellus folks couldn't make it today, it's worth noting a bit about their background. They're one of the largest master planning development companies in the country, with a well-known track record in both the Bay Area and nationally with marquee projects that include, very well-known here, Mission Bay, which is a 300-acre project with over 5 million feet of office and commercial space and 6,500 homes. And we think with that group, we have a compelling proposal that will enable the successful redevelopment of the Cow Palace land more broadly. And Bridge will be an integral component to that as well, given the affordable component of that project that will be in place. And with that, I'll head it back.
Thanks, Dan. I wanted to dive into some of our kind of planning and master planning experience. This is an evolution of some work that Bridge has been doing over the years. The project on the top is a 29-acre parcel in West Oakland. It's now completely built out. We acquired it, entitled it, built the infrastructure, built the affordable housing, and then sold parcels to market rate developers. The properties below are shown, Balboa Reservoir in San Francisco. We've been on a year-and-a-half-long community outreach effort. We're now in for entitlements. Our draft EIR is being circulated as we speak. And then more recently, just down the road here at Daly City, former PUC site, we were selected again with a partner, and we're doing 160 affordable units out of those 100, and that project has been submitted to the City. We spent about nine months on an outreach process there. We're also engaged in a number of large-scale projects. I think I skipped one. Here on the edge of San Francisco at Petra, we just completed our first phase. This is compelling because of the steep slopes and the infrastructure and the need to build within it, and that has a lot of similarity to the Carter Martin site. We've just completed the first phase, and we're on to the second phase. Similarly, in Los Angeles, had to build a major road through this project, Century Boulevard, connecting that large arterial through the city. Before we could begin, you can see on the bottom left, the first village of housing that's just nearly complete here today. And then closer to home here in San Mateo County, we have a project down at Bay Meadows that's under construction right now. We have the project in South San Francisco I just mentioned. And then right here on the Daly City border in Colma, Tressel Glen is a mixed-use project. It's affordable, it has daycare and the ground floor. And then finally, a seniors building that we recently renovated out in Pacifica. I'm highlighting these newer buildings because what we're trying to bring to Daly City is really high-quality design. And the secret other part of that equation is high-quality property management. So in our experience, those go together, starting with a robust outreach process or community process. So real quickly, we, here's some concepts I want to talk about. We haven't had the benefit of interacting with staff, we haven't talked to the community, but this will give you a couple ideas maybe about our process. We looked at a lot of different ways that Carter Martin might be developed, and a couple things came out. The upper portion of the site is flat, has direct access to infrastructure. We think that would be an ideal Phase One. You could build, as we've shown, just conceptually here, you know, 125 apartments and 16 townhomes, for example, in a first phase. Second phase on the lower portion of the site might be implemented as part of a larger master planning effort in concert both with the Cy West property and the Cow Palace property. A slight variation on that theme would be if we wanted to build 225 apartments in Phase One, you could build that while the master planning effort for the rest of the three properties was underway and not be held up by what's inevitably going to be a longer-term process, but you could get this project to market quicker. And although the site might hold 350-plus units, very difficult to finance a 350-unit affordable housing project. So this probably will be phased in some configuration or another. The alternate there, alternate two, was just showing a townhouse execution. We think the townhouses can add a mixed-income component. We think they can add a little bit of cash to the gap funding for the affordable component, and we've done that successfully right down the street here in Colma, and we're doing it in San Francisco right now. Couple ideas, obviously, we have steep slope, we have some habitat, we'd love to avoid the costs associated with those if we could. As I mentioned, we think that first pad could go right away and move quickly. We also think that in the combined master planning of these three properties, the sum is going to be, I'm sorry, the whole is going to be greater than the sum of the parts. So Cy West needs to be involved, the Cow Palace needs to be involved, and the City needs to be involved. We have a reasonable understanding of this community with our consultants, who have a long history here of outreach and understanding the city's process and the neighborhood. We often start these efforts by doing something we call neighborhood assessment. We include that in our package. A couple little takeaways, this is based on the census tract that Carter Martin falls in, and relative to the county, incomes are substantially lower in this neighborhood, and poverty is 40% greater than the county-wide as a whole. So we think this affordable housing strategy that you all embarked on is absolutely the right approach. It's going to allow people to stay in Daly City and allow those folks to be, try not to be too impacted by this boom that we're in the middle of. On the financing side, there's really two major components to a kind of master planning effort. There's the entitlement piece. That's the most risky capital that any developer spends, to go spend $1 million, $5 or $2 million on architecture, engineering, legal, and EIR, et cetera. So Bridge has working capital. The master plans I showed you earlier, we've shown a willingness to spend that in that risk phase. We're a production-oriented company, and our organization has gotten comfortable with these larger-scale projects. We do get to the finish line, we do build the housing, we do pay ourselves back eventually. The second component of that is really the gap financing for the affordable housing. So a traditional for 4% tax credit and tax-exempt bond allocation, along with Measure K money from the county. We know the county is offering money for pre-development, so we may ask them to be a partner. We think the site has potential to go seek infill infrastructure grant funds from the state. We've been quite successful in that program in the past. And then finally, we propose to bring some of the proceeds from the market rate townhomes as a capital source for the affordable. I want to try to finish on time, or maybe a little early here. Quite simply, you know, the vision that you asked for, we see as a sustainable community that's attainable to a wide array of Daly City residents. And we do want to maximize this site. We think there's well over 300 units that can be built here, and we want to make sure it's integrated into the neighborhood and also into the new communities that are evolving on our flank, like the Cow Palace and the Cy West property. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me start with the first question.
Sure.
All right. Describe how your team will work with the Bay Shore community and the benefits your project will bring to the larger Bay Shore neighborhood. Please describe your neighborhood outreach plan.
Well, I do think that that community is going to benefit from some amenities that can come, both from Carter Martin, probably in the form of open space, and more importantly, from the Cow Palace in the form of retail shopping opportunities. Clearly, the housing is going to be a public benefit for a wider range of residents in Daly City. The outreach plan, I think we'd model it after something we just completed recently here in South San Francisco. You know, we started with some of those sketches that we showed you here tonight, very simple, nothing hardline. We haven't made decisions, but communities need to respond to something, so you've got to start the process. So we usually start with introducing who we are, describing what eventually might be a series of community meetings, get input, have the plan respond to what we hear in those meetings. Maybe we have the access point all wrong, and the community knows the traffic better than we do, or even better than our traffic engineer, and suggests we split the traffic somehow. Or there are some view sheds that we didn't take into consideration, maybe part of the building needs to be smaller. So in my experience, when communities see a plan that actually responds to what they said, we come back six weeks later with a plan and say, here's what we heard, and then we show the plan, and we say, here's where it showed up. And here's the things we couldn't accommodate. The guy that said, we don't want to build anything there, we say, we can't do that. But we're attentive, and we also bring our subject matter experts into this conversation. So we have our architects and engineers. In this case, engineering's a big, complicated part of this effort. We'll want to tell the city's story, that the city, as a successor agency, you know, has a need to move quickly, and we're here to try to move that process along. So I think by the time you get to the end of that process, people may not be in love with what you're doing, but they'll see that you're sincere, they'll see that we've addressed some of their concerns prior to making any formal submittal to the city.
Okay. Vice Mayor, question number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, what do you see as the biggest challenge in developing this site, and how will you address it?
I think the challenge is also an opportunity. The fact that it's tied at the hip to two other parcels, three property owners working together. We're doing that in a number of settings, it's totally feasible. You get a lot of brain power working on the problem, but it also presents some challenges. Different parties move at different speeds, the state may have their own speed. Thank you, City, for pushing them to do what they're doing with the Cow Palace. I think their RFP was a direct response to what Daly City offered. So I think that's a challenge and an opportunity. I think the site itself is quite challenging. If you've been out there and walked on those slopes and seen how steep this is, we're in a moment where construction costs are already astronomical and going up at 8% or 10% a year. And here we have a site that requires a lot of engineering, retaining walls, et cetera, new infrastructure. So those are challenges. I think we can overcome those. The state's infill infrastructure grant program is designed for this kind of property. So we want to bring tools we've used in other places to overcome some of those challenges.
Thank you. Dr. Wright.
Describe how your concept provides for integration of surrounding parcels for the overall benefit of the site.
Kind of inclined to go backward real quick here. We're pretty sure that transportation is going to guide the framework of the master planning here, so we've at least shown some backbone infrastructure that we think seems logical. Again, this was under a tight timeframe without the benefit of our consultants, the city or the community. But clearly, all of these properties need access, ingress, egress from each other. And there's a lot of infrastructure to be built, so sharing those costs across the three properties is the opportunity. Finding the right way to serve each property effectively and efficiently, that'll be the big challenge, but I'm sure with the kind of design horsepower that the three groups are going to bring with the city's umbrella, I think we can overcome that.
Thank you.
Ms. Manella.
What is your financial plan for this project, and what will be the key financial resources used to finance your project? And is this financial plan consistent with the timeframe included in your proposal? Do you foresee any project delays due to funding shortfalls or access to capital? And is your financial plan reliant on federal sources, which might not be available in the next few years?
I'll start with the end. We don't imagine any federal sources in this financing plan. So fortunately, the state of California, well aware of the housing crisis, has brought a lot of resources to bear, and as voters, we've all helped pass some measures that are bringing some capital, Measure K being the local version of that. Our financing plan is shown here. As I said earlier, the riskiest capital is that early working capital for entitlements, where the project might fall apart due to recession or things beyond any of our control. That happens occasionally, but we're prepared, Bridge and our partner, to bring that risk capital to the conversation. Make sure I got the last part of that question. So our timeframe that's in the binder, we were looking at that this week again. We think we can exceed the timeframe there. Part of the challenge, and you all are aware of this, but in the affordable housing finance realm, our funding is kind of lumpy, and sometimes application rounds maybe twice a year. So if you miss one, we don't get the project entitled until a month after a deadline. We might have to wait five months to reapply, for example. So there's some things that are schedule-wise that we'll want to try to coordinate, but they will have to follow the entitlement effort. And all of that financing happens, for the most part, after the project is fully entitled. Project delays due to funding shortfalls. I think we're going to, I think we're going to be hustling during the entitlement project, and if you look at the schedule, you see there's some overlapping bars there that, for example, they think the county, with a support letter from the city, would be amenable to committing funds prior to fully, a project being fully entitled. So other than that, I don't, I don't see any significant problems or delays.
So what is the percentage of funding? I know you mentioned your financing plan, but what is the percentage of funding out of the resources that you've mentioned on the chart or in the slide?
Well, I will say, we don't have a detailed cost estimate for the infrastructure and the like, but the traditional tax credit model, that tax credit equity will pay for 40% to 50% of the project. There'll be a permanent mortgage, tax-exempt mortgage, presumably that will cover 25% of the project, and the balance will be a combination of local, I'll call that Measure K, and state funds. So we're probably seeking 25% of the project costs in gap funding from an outside source.
Thank you.
Chris Giovanni.
Thank you. Excuse my voice. Thank you for being here. Describe your relationship with other members of your team and the benefit that various team members bring. How is the partnership stronger and more effective than Mercy Core, developing the site on its own? Please describe the strengths the various members of your team bring. Thank you.
Well, we are, as I showed earlier, a number of examples of large-scale master plans, and each one of those, or all but one, we have market rate partners, and that helps share that risk, as we were talking about it, share that risk capital. We are actively working with DECA and Cattellus on another project, described earlier, the Cow Palace. Through both of these efforts, we've gotten to know each other and understand each other's strengths. In many respects, we have the capacity internally to do a lot of this work ourself, and on projects we often embark without a partner, but there are occasions for strategic reasons where it makes sense, and that, we viewed that here as an important factor. We're very interested in the larger effort. Very much like to be your partner on Carter Martin, but our appetite and our bandwidth and our expertise is in the larger-scale work and integrating these projects together. And we think with Cattellus's background, which is even more dramatic than what we've done, we've got projects that are 1,500 units or 1,800 units, and they're building millions and millions of feet. So I think you get a couple best-in-class partners in this regard, not only for Carter Martin, but for the larger effort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you describe in one or two sentences your vision for this project?
I certainly can. I do think we want a sustainable, a green project, but we want it to be attainable to the widest swath of members of Daly City. And again, based on the demographics, a little bit of research we'd begun to do, we think this is an important component here. We know the Bay Shore neighborhood has been waiting for years. We would like to bring them something that's worth the wait, that they're proud of, and that we can all be proud of.
Great. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up are Core Companies.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair and chairpersons. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Chris Neal. I'm the executive vice president of the Core Companies. With me is Carl Huttel, the manager. We are a regional housing developer, primarily in Santa Clara County, San Mateo County. We're a for-profit company, and with a specialty in affordable housing. We've been doing this for over 30 years. We've primarily been in Santa Clara County, but for the last five years or so, we've been working in San Mateo County. We completed a project in the city of Menlo Park for homeless veterans, working with the VA. We are currently working on a project in Milbury, at the Milbury-Bart Station, working with a market rate developer who's master planned the parking lot. We're doing an 80-unit affordable housing project. We're just the affordable housing project in that case, with a preference for veterans. And we are currently working with your staff on a project at Eastmore and Sullivan in Daly City, so we're very excited to be here. I would like to acknowledge the work that staff did. I think whatever the outcome is, next week, I think the winners will be Daly City and its residents. It's a small family group, who are the affordable housing developers in the region, and I do know that I hold Bridge and Mercy in very high regard, so I think there's no wrong outcome that could come out of this, as long as it's in the best interest of the city. And I think you have a diverse set of options, so I think that's very exciting for the council and for its residents. And so with that, I will pass it off to Carl to give some background on our qualifications for this project.
Thanks, Chris. So again, to the Finance Agency Board members, thanks for inviting us back for the interview portion of this. And just to continue to build what, build on what Chris mentioned relating to our experience, so I'm going to present more in terms of our past and present projects to show, introduce our team to you and our company to you, and then my answers related to the questions will be more separate than the last presentation. So, starting off, this is a 25-acre master plan that we completed in San Jose. It's now completely built out as of a few years ago. So this is a great example of how we incorporated a wide range of not only housing types, but affordability ranges into a single project. We overcame a lot of challenges, first assembling the parcels and then dealing with the neighbors. So similar to the Carter Martin site, we'll have a lot of agreements and interaction with the neighboring properties. We were able to build 32 units of family shelter, 95 units of affordable family. We were able to build 32 units of family shelter, 95 units of affordable family, 185 units of affordable senior, and 230 units market rate rental that included a 10,000-square-foot retail component with some neighborhood retail that ended up being very successful. And that was just Phase One. Phase Two was then developed by a national home builder, and that was for-sale townhomes. And so within the site, you've got everything from supportive shelter housing to market rate for-sale housing and market rate luxury rental. So we think this is a great example of our master planning experience and the wide range of units that we can provide at a single site. Next is an in-process master plan that we have in Santa Clara, California. We won the site through an RFP, so it's a public-private partnership with the city of Santa Clara. It's six acres. It has four separate uses on it. It has 165-unit senior affordable project. It has 160-unit market rate component, a 36-unit for-sale townhome component, and an urban farm there that you see at the front of the photo, or rendering, rather, that there will be a working farm and not just a static, non-dynamic decoration, if you will. It'll be a working farm managed by a professional farm consultant that we've engaged. And we think it'll really make this community a unique addition to the area. This is directly adjacent to Santana Row and the Valley Fair commercial complex in Santa Clara. Willow Housing, I think Chris mentioned this before, it's a veteran project that we completed three years ago in Menlo Park, California, through a ground lease with the VA. This actually segued us into two future veteran development that we have. And Chris also mentioned, one of them is in Milbury and the other one is in West Los Angeles on the VA campus, 150 units, scheduled to start a few years from now. In our Menlo Park project, we also had to incorporate the desire from the VA to mesh the new design with our historic buildings and their historic elements, as well as preserving mature oak trees. Art Arc is an artist-preference, 100% affordable housing project with live-work lofts that are available to the artists. Commonary includes an art gallery, an active art gallery, that has monthly events for the community and for the artists living there. Lenzin Square was 100% affordable project financed by tax credits, also in San Jose, that we completed roughly 15 years ago and was a successful project. Cornerstone at Japan Town was a unique example. We produced an affordable housing project for large families in San Jose. That's in the Japan Town neighborhood in San Jose. And then, I believe, the last two examples, two examples of Fiesta Lane townhomes was a mixed affordable and market rate moderate townhome execution, 32 units in San Jose. And then Crimson was a strictly market rate execution of 80 townhomes in San Jose. Lastly, is an example of market rate rental executions that we've done. First is Marquee, 166-unit project, Class A apartments, three-acre infill site in San And finally, Link, which was mentioned previously as part of our Newberry Master Plan, was a 230-unit market rate building with a 10,000-feet of retail on the ground floor. And so that's an introduction to some of the very projects that we've completed over our history as both market rate and affordable developer. We operate as separate legal entities, but we are able to do all those different functions under the same roof with the same experience. So we think we're uniquely qualified in that sense, that we can execute both the market rate and the affordable elements of the project ourselves. So I believe that was the last slide. Yeah, that was the last slide.
Okay. Ready for your questions?
Sure. Ready.
Describe how your team will work with the Bay Shore community and the benefits your project will bring to the larger Bay Shore neighborhood. Please describe your neighborhood outreach plan.
Sure. Well, I think we have five main points for our community outreach. Number one being housing solutions that are unique to the community. So as a result of our community outreach, we'll find what uses the community may want on the site, be it daycare, retail, something innovative like the urban farm, or education or tutoring services on the site. And the amenities that we provide there will directly reflect the needs of the community to the extent that they're feasible and to the extent that they're reasonable. Because obviously, members of the community will have different needs and wants and requests, so to balance the requests of the various members.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
What do you see as the biggest challenge in developing this site, and how will you address it?
Well, I think the challenges are pretty clear. I think coordination with the adjacent property owners, the two large sites next door, unknown possible environmental issues, the elevation change across the site, and the financial feasibility. So by incorporating the market rate and affordable elements, we'll make the project more financially feasible. So raising funds via the market rate elements might increase the amount of affordable housing that we can provide at the site.
Thank you. Dr. Wright.
Describe how your concept provides for integration of surrounding parcels for the overall benefit of the site.
Sure. Well, I think having three or more different product types will allow for transitions with the neighbors in the appropriate ways. Being this early on in the process, I don't think you can point to exact ways that this site will transition with the neighboring sites. I think it's too early for that. So a great example of what we've done in the past can be found in our Agrihood project in Santa Clara, where some of the uses were lower density next to the site. And so we had to accommodate that in the design of our higher-density buildings.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Mano.
What is your financial plan for this project? What will be the key financial resources used to finance your project? And is this financial plan consistent with the timeframe included in your proposal? Do you foresee any project delays due to funding shortfalls or access to capital? And is your financial plan reliant on federal sources which might not be available in the next few years? And what is the percentage of funding sources you mentioned?
Sure. Well, our financial plan centers around the key known affordable housing sources that include tax credits mentioned before, tax-exempt bond financing, and then ultimately, public gap funding. And then secondarily, any funds that might be raised from the market rate components that could then be funneled back into the affordable components of the project. We don't expect any delays arising from funding shortfalls once the design's been established. So once you have an established design, estimating the cost of that design will mitigate any delays in funding. So I don't think any delays. And then, as far as the federal sources, we don't anticipate any problems with the federal sources, although it's impossible to anticipate all public policy. But no, we don't anticipate any problems.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't get an answer to the percentage of funding from the different sources that was asked of the other group.
Oh, sure.
What percentages?
Well, tax credits, that's a fairly programmatic thing. So as mentioned before, it's usually 40% to 50%. Depending on the basis boost that you get for various categories, as your basis increases, your tax credit allocation can also increase. So 40% to 50% for the tax credits. The permanent debt is highly dependent on the affordability. So the higher affordability, the more permanent debt you can raise, the lower, the less. So that varies quite a bit. And then the rest is filled in by public gap funding.
Ms. Giavani, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Your qualification statements does not envision a specific team. How do you see yourself collaborating with adjacent landowners and/or financial backers to bring this project to fruition?
Well, once a community-driven project design is arrived at, we'd have the information that we need to enter into contracts with the neighboring landowners to solidify what we'd be doing with them. But I think in the interest of moving this project along and providing affordable housing at this site, I think you would want to limit the requirements on the site as they pertain to the other sites, or at least clearly define them so that this site won't be held up. Because it would be very easy to do. The more committed this site is to jointly moving with the other sites, I think there's a real risk for delay there. So I think through contractual agreements defining what our interaction will be with the neighboring landowners, that's how we'll...
Thank you.
Can you describe in one or two sentences your vision for this project?
I think so. So we envision a vibrant and exciting development that provides a range of housing opportunities, all the way from extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate and workforce housing, all the way up to market rate housing. And it also introduces significant new amenities and services to the Bay Shore community. And I think this development has potential to be a major agent of revitalization and change for the Bay Shore neighborhood.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Next up, Mercy SiWest.
We're trying to get everybody in the front row. Appreciate the friends from Bridge moving.
Of course.
Bill, if you want. Grab a seat if you want. You can't. Bill can't sit. All right, forget it. All right, well, we're all going to stand then in the end. Sorry, Brad, thanks for moving.
I'm excited.
Okay, well, anyway, thanks very much for having us here. I'm Doug Shoemaker with Mercy Housing, and happy to share a little bit about our team and answer your questions. Very excited to be here and to talk with you again. You can see from our project team, it's a combination principally of Mercy Housing California. We're a mission-driven nonprofit. Talk a little bit more about us, but we're very familiar with Daly City. We've done a lot of work in the city of Daly City and Colma, Pacifica, and the other side of Geneva throughout Visitation Valley. So we're incredibly familiar with the neighborhood and really pride ourselves on being an organization that gets deeply involved with the communities that we work in. SiWest of Alman, I think you know Bill and his team well, actively pursuing the Cow Palace site. And we'll talk a little bit about why we think together we really offer something specific for this particular project. We're also happy to be joined tonight by Rick Williams from Dan Meehan Williams &amp; Pollack. He's done a lot of work. That firm has done a lot of work with us on master-planned communities that we've done, including the work that we're doing just around the corner from this site at Sunnydale. So just talk a little bit more about our vision for it. We actually think what's really critical about this is really thinking about this as an integrated, mixed-income community, that we really take advantage of the SiWest parcel next door and the Daly City-owned parcel for the affordable housing, and try and work dynamically with them to create a real mix of incomes and ultimately, a mix of uses throughout the site, hopefully with the redevelopment of the Cow Palace site. What I think is really important is you sort of think about Geneva and how it's sort of broken up in lots of different places by parking lots, electric switching stations and whatnot, is a real opportunity for this housing to kind of reconnect various parts of the neighborhood back into the rest of the broader Bay Shore community and actually across the entire valley. What we think is really interesting about the opportunity to partner together is that it provides us with a lot of flexibility in how we develop the site. We could work dynamically with you and your staff to try and think about sort of where we want different uses to go and how to most intelligently and efficiently redevelop these parcels. And then last but not least, obviously, I think you couldn't live in the Bay Area and not be aware of just how deep the affordable housing crisis that we're all living through is. And so I think for us, the opportunity to work together with SiWest to create as much as 1,400 units of new homes for Daly City residents, including 250 that would be affordable, is an incredible opportunity. We don't get to see opportunities like this every day, and it was one of the main reasons we jumped at this opportunity to respond to the RFQ. Excuse me, I got a cold over the weekend from my kids and I'm on my 18th cough drop, but it doesn't seem to be doing any good.
Me, too.
So a little bit about Mercy Housing. Some of you may know us. As I said before, we've developed a number of different developments here in Daly City, Schoolhouse Station, St. Andrews, right up the block, Carter Terrace, which is just on the San Francisco side, but literally right around the corner from this, that we developed several years back. We're an active developer in this neighborhood, where we have one of our main offices in San Francisco and develop up and down the peninsula as well as in San Francisco. We're just finishing up a veterans' housing deal in Colma, right around the corner. Be sure to make sure you guys get invitations to that grand opening. We're very excited about it. I think one of the things that, two things I would say about it, we think it would be really important to create a mix of housing types here with both family and senior housing. Obviously, there's housing needs all over the place, but one of the things we pride ourselves on is we're sort of nationally recognized for our service-enriched approach to housing. And that takes different forms and different developments. Barbara's going to talk about it. But I think it's something we bring to the table that is really unique. We're an incredibly efficient, business-oriented developer that brings this intense, mission-driven component around services. I think it's something that we offer that is rather unique to our team and hopefully something that we'd be able to bring to this project. And then last but not least, partnerships. I would say probably 50% of all our work is partnership-based. It can be Mercy Housing working with a local church or synagogue or a social service agency. We work a ton with for-profit developers that are developing market rate housing and have an affordable component with them. We're currently working on four or five such deals, including one with Related at Sunnydale around the corner and a couple in downtown San Francisco. And we're familiar with sort of all the elements that go into making for a successful mixed-income partnership. And I think that's something that we would bring to the table and hopefully offer our services in that regard and be able to kind of anticipate some of the issues that might arise for the project. As I sort of mentioned earlier, we've been active in this area for quite some time. I think probably many of you remember the old Geneva Towers and when those were blown up, we redeveloped those into more community-scaled family developments. One of them was Carter Terrace that you saw around the corner. I don't know if you were there that day. I was there. That was one of the weirdest days of my life to watch all these people cheering, the blowing up of some affordable housing. But we rebuilt it in a really intelligent way that I think has been very successful. We're working on the 1,500-unit mixed-income redevelopment of Sunnydale, which I mentioned around the corner. Very challenging site, but very relevant to this in terms of the infrastructure and other elements. And then I think we're incredibly aware of the importance of bringing a real retail presence back to this community that's missing, as well as addressing some of the safety concerns and transportation concerns that we think are really central to this site and really to the broader Bay Shore community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick.
Thank you very much, Doug. In center to this was kind of a coordinated vision that the team developed in a very short period of time. Of course, we didn't have community input, so we're taking a little bit of a chance to present a vision that really exemplifies the type of community that we think may be appropriate for the area. And it can take many different organizations and many different final designs, but we wanted to present something that was really strong, because the stronger the vision is at the beginning, the greater chance of success at the end. And what we're envisioning is really a whole, entire new neighborhood that has, the properties are blurred. There are no property lines anymore. They're all blurred. You can walk down it and you're not going from one property to the next, but you're just walking through a neighborhood. It's connected by open spaces. It extends throughout the neighborhood, so it's shared throughout. That there could be a combination of higher-density housing, senior housing, as Doug mentioned, family housing, smaller unit housing for smaller apartments. And we illustrated townhomes on the Upper Drive off of Carter Street. And probably also something like an overlooked terrace at the top of Miller and Carter, because that would really give something back to the neighborhood that's kind of overlooking the property. But we wanted to blend those developments together. We feel that the other key component of it could be integrating in the Cow Palace property for that neighborhood retail center that is really desperately needed in this community, desperately needs a grocery store as well as other shops and services. But you can see how these uses could all be integrated into a coherent community. But you can see how these uses could all be integrated into a coherent community with open space, a variety of housing, both market rate and affordable housing, as well as a variety of different types of living as well. The vision really includes a linear park, nicely attended neighborhood streets, retail open space plazas and gathering spaces for the community, as well as that all-important grocery store, which we think is, will be a key to working with the Cow Palace to realize that portion of the vision. And all of those uses being interconnected so you can walk and bike throughout the development and throughout the neighborhood. So our vision is really one of connecting, connecting to the existing neighborhoods, connecting to the existing fabric of the community, and seeing this vision is one that we can bring forth to a neighborhood, get input, refine, but keep the fundamental principles that we outlined today.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Evening.
I'm Bill Viera, part of the Si West, Mercy and Si West team. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We've looked forward to this for quite a while. We've been looking to deploy our land for a number of years. In fact, in 2017, late 2017, even entered an MOU with the city with the objective, hopefully, of reaching this master plan scenario. So we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. We were excited to team up with Mercy, and as mentioned earlier, these are really great firms. Everyone that has been invited here and spoke tonight is just wonderful. Specific to our entertaining, the teaming with Mercy, they're for us as close to a pure-play affordable builder as we could find, so we're super excited. I'll speed it up, I'm sorry. So...
You could probably incorporate your answers into some of these questions.
Sure, no worries.
All right, you want me to ask you the first question?
Whatever.
Oh, okay, all right. Describe how your team will work with the Bay Shore community and the benefits your project will bring to the larger Bay Shore neighborhood. Please describe your neighborhood outreach plan.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Barbara Galco, and I direct the real estate development work for Mercy Housing. And I just want to point out a couple of things, and then I'll get right to your question. Amy Bailey is in the back, and Sister Amy Bailey directs our community engagement work, and Aileah Lavora is there, and she would be like the proposed project manager working with me. So, working with the Bay Shore community, so clearly, no, you can't create a great neighborhood without really working with all the stakeholders in that community, residents, groups, churches, electeds, the whole panoply of groups. And so we really feel that there's probably like four super-important aspects to a really strong community engagement strategy. The first would be really one-on-one, small meetings with everyone that everyone tells us to meet with in that neighborhood, neighborhood associations, city leaders, community leaders, individual residents that surround us. You know, there's like, we know that saddleback homes is right up above our property, Carter Terrace, which we did a lot of work with some years back when we were entitling Carter Terrace. We would need to do outreach to all those groups. Once we meet with them, we really need to listen, and we need to incorporate what they tell us and their thoughts and their fears and their hopes into our design. Rick presented a design that's a thought, but really, it's really in large part what people see as being really important in their community that we need to listen to. Third, we really, in creating sort of this interaction with residents and creating sort of a sense of trust with them, we would come up with whether it's sort of small groups and doing charrettes, or large community meetings with the architect to really sort of vet what we're doing. And those meetings would be reoccurring. Sometimes, you know, as a result of those meetings, we end up with sort of advisory groups to help us advise the development, not only when we're planning it, but to exist in the future when we're even under construction or done. And all of this, we need to do with really strong communication, with having really good, frequently asked questions, fact sheets, updates, even like a project website. So these are all what we think are really critical tools to community outreach. We see the benefits here for the broader Bay Shore neighborhood is really strong affordable housing for both families and seniors with services, like for our elders to ensure that they can age in place appropriately. This notion that Rick described of really connecting the neighborhood and really inviting them in, inviting them in to the parks or to the overlook, as well as the mixed-use component, creating a place, the grocery store and the retail, which is really something that Si West really excels in, can sort of be another draw and another anchor for that neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Rice, Mayor. Thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges in developing this site, and how will you address it?
Thank you very much. Once again, it's a nice, simple, flat, rectilinear site, no problems whatsoever. But since we didn't get that site, we will, we will really, we've already done some studies on the topography and the grading. We brought in BKF early on to evaluate how, with a difference, this planning strategy for the extension of roadways, et cetera. And we believe that we have a plan that is doable, given the grading information that we have, and we do have some pretty detailed information on these sites, because Si West has been looking at this for a number of years. We do know that having this team kind of takes two pieces of the puzzle in the equation and adds them together and gives a lot of momentum to being able to extend streets, utilities, et cetera. And then what we're really looking for with the Cow Palace site is the ability to work cooperatively with the Cow Palace, and Bill would like to be able to really develop that portion of it as well. And what we need to do is be able to extend a few utilities and some access points that are pretty consistent with some of the existing circulation. It wouldn't be a big impediment to the use of the sites in their current state, but we would like to be able to see those set up for the future development as we envision it. So while there are challenges, we think that there are also opportunities, and the holding capacity of these sites is really determined by the cooperation, that each site can achieve a greater amount of housing, a greater amount of development potential, if the three sites are working together than if they're working separately. And so we've taken on that challenge with some conceptual design, some preliminary analysis, and feel pretty comfortable that that vision we presented is one that can be achieved.
Thank you.
Describe how your concept provides for integration of surrounding parcels for the overall benefit of the whole site.
As Rick mentioned, you know, the sum of the parts will come up with a much greater whole here. Our design is really intended to benefit not only the city property, but all parcels that are adjacent in a city property, with somewhat of the grid organization, and there should be perosity that brings people in and through the site to the adjacent Cow Palace. Of course, we would like to be the developer, but without regard to whether we are or we're not, it is intended to connect. And so while we would like to develop it, if someone else ultimately does, or if the Cow Palace stays in its current form for an extended period of time, we still would look to connect. We're very familiar with the operating nuances that relates to the Cow Palace on a daily basis, so we think we can embrace that. We spent considerable time and money in prior renditions, addressing the site concerns. But really, what we're looking for is the flexibility to develop and to manage the housing in pods that are, that can operate and manage independently, and also can be financed independently for the future, but yet be a cohesive neighborhood that allows, again, perosity by use of the social spine or the green belt that comes in off of Geneva, and helps to even work and embrace the grades that will help even out a little bit more of a walkable experience inside, as opposed to like Carter where you have serious topography changes. So it's really about embracing the site and making it work in unison. You know, the team is really focused on finding the most expeditious way to create and to deploy a master plan here, and it really has three core objectives in my mind, is to deliver affordable housing and market rate housing, is to try to deliver the neighborhood retail experience that everybody in the community needs, and then it's also to serve as essentially a first phase or a catalyst project for further development that should occur in the area and should come to the community here. It validates the ability of the Cow Palace Board to transact, quite frankly, and it will then either give them the liquidity or the funds to invest in their venue and to improve it, or to, again, further a redevelopment process along on the adjacent lands. So it essentially validates and then sets the first stage.
Ms. Manillo.
What is your financial plan for this project? What will be the key financial resources used to finance your project? And is this financial plan consistent with the timeframe included in your proposal? Do you foresee any project delays due to funding shortfalls or access to capital? And is your financial plan reliant on federal sources, which might not be available in the next few years? What is the percentage of funding sources mentioned?
Sure. So our family and senior development would likely be financed separately and done in phases, and both developments would be eligible for many of, honestly, many of the funding sources that my colleagues have mentioned. So we would imagine using the low-income housing tax credit, the state sources that are available to us, which are pretty numerous right now, so there's a multifamily housing production program, there is the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Program from HCD, there's the infill grant program. So we would look to, we would look to all of these and see as we sort of develop our, get into the project, what makes the most sense for it. We would also talk with San Mateo County about participating in the financing for this as well. Our program doesn't really call for use of federal funds, but there is, there was recently at the federal level, the senior housing program called the HUD 202 program issued a NOFA, and we see some of that money trickling in. It's kind of a really good source to help subsidize senior rent levels in the senior component, so we would explore it. Our plan isn't reliant on it, but it's a good financing source to explore. The way we see this working in order, I think you had a question about delays and timeline, is we would really, as we are entitling this and getting to that rezone, which is, you know, will take a bit of time, we would sort of be, you know, working our pro formas on both the family development and senior development, to come up with what the best financing scenario would be for each of those. And so that, so that when the project does get its rezone and entitlements, we could literally be prepared to submit those applications, because as you all know, they're competitive and entitlements are one of those milestones we need to achieve. Let's see, your other question?
Mix of sources.
Mix of sources. Oh, percentage of sources. So that isn't a whole lot different than what my colleagues have described, tax credits usually are, 40 to 50% of the financing. A permanent loan is really dependent on how deep our affordability is in each of these developments. Certainly a conversation we would want to have with you all about where the right rent levels would be. So depending on that, you know, the perm loan could be just 10%, or it could be 20% with the remaining funding filled by one of these state sources that I mentioned and the county of San Mateo.
Okay. Ms. DeGroni.
Thank you. Describe your relationship with other members of your team and the benefit that various team members bring. How is this partnership stronger and more effective than Bridge or Core developing this site on its own? Excuse me. Please describe the strengths the various members of your team bring.
Sure. So Mercy Housing has, as I mentioned, Sister Amy runs our community engagement work, and so we have a sole staff dedicated to this upfront process that would be very active during the entitlement phase. And in fact, you know, Amy did much of the community work when we entitled Carter Terrace, which was a full rezone of that site. Actually, a tiny piece of Carter Terrace is in Daly City, one little corner, and worked extensively with like saddleback homes. And in general, Mercy Housing staff, myself, I actually worked on Carter Terrace a little bit, I worked on Schoolhouse Station and Vista Grande back in the day. Aileah's very experienced, being with Mercy for 15 years. We are like a strong, solid, on-the-ground developer, day-to-day. We've been together a long time, we know how to work together, and we know how to do complex rezonings, which we have done on many occasions, including the Sunnydale development that Doug mentioned. We also do a lot of partnerships with for-profits as well, and with Si West, who has a strong, not only knows this whole area and site inside out, but really understands the retail, and we really feel that the retail component of this is really important in sort of building this sort of mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhood. And I think in working together, we can figure out the most cost-effective way to develop this, because there are the slope challenges and the utility challenges. And so coming up with this together and being able to have flexibility on where we put things will be super-important, because costs, we certainly live in a high, with high costs these days in terms of construction.
Okay, final question. Can you describe in one or two sentences your vision for this project?
I'll try. No, I'm just kidding. So I think our vision is really about creating affordable homes for families and seniors in a new mixed-income and mixed-use neighborhood that really invites the rest of the neighborhood in through really thoughtful street connections and amenities such as the park and the retail that would, that would help them live there successfully.
Great. Thank you very much. So I want to thank everyone for participating in this interview process, it's been very enlightening, and I want to thank you for submitting your materials and for making your presentations and answering our questions. As you know, we were going to decide this issue on September 30th.
It's October.
Sorry.
It's our meeting.
Oh, it's October 14th. October 14th meeting, and so good luck to everybody. Unless anyone from the council has any comments, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Any comments? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for all the applicants, thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well, because I heard a lot of pinpoints that are needed. We're a large city, and we're someone that hasn't even done anything for veterans, and we are doing the healthy aging and a focus on our seniors being in place, and, you know, a small percentage can't make everything that, and families, and with the family component being, with the mixed-low income, which I got information from the school districts that the lower mixed-income, because they lost students. So we want to make sure that families can stay, and with that, then even our police can be able to afford, and firefighters coming through that we'll hopefully be hiring, and other employees in our city. So they'll be able to stay in our city and live and work for a difference. So thank you very much to all of you, I appreciate your thought process.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.